Good evening. Welcome, we will go ahead and call our April 26th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. So thank you for joining us. If you would please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you would now join us for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First up this evening is the Agenda Approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please sign where saying ayes.
Ayes.
Any opposed? Okay. We will jump straight down then to new business item number one. And Meredith Guns, our Planning Director, is going to give us an update on our preliminary flood insurance rate maps. Welcome back. Quite a few miles you traveled today.
I did.
Thanks for getting back in time to share with us.
I did. I was at the North Carolina Association of Flood Plane Managers meeting in Atlantic Beach for two and a half days and got to talk to the people that created our new flood maps and spent some time with some other people that were very helpful in further discussion about our flood maps. Just to give you an update since the last meeting, Dare County and the municipality planning staff have been meeting. We've met three times. And most of the Dare County staff agree that we should adopt, probably look to adopt the maps for insurance purposes and then formulate higher regulatory standards in our flood damage prevention ordinance to protect what we already know and have data that floods regularly so that we are protecting our town and our infrastructure. We are still, as a group, looking at standardizing an elevation by zone so that it's easy for the builders and the engineers. That elevation's definitely not been determined yet, but most are in agreement that if we can work together so that we all have the same basic plan, that it will be easy and it'll be a joint type of approach to the higher regulatory standards. We're also working as a group to create a united message to promote flood insurance for people to maintain their flood insurance even if they have been moved outside of the flood zone. We've gone over the multiple reasons why people should maintain their flood insurance even if they're not in the flood zone. So we are working on that united message that we will try to put to, out to the public, probably in the next three or four months, that of course will come back to this board when it's been finalized for approval. The discussions I had the past two and a half days with the map creators and several of the engineers and hydrologists about the changes to our maps and the dramatic change that happened in Kittle Hill. Kittle Hill has obviously got the most properties moving out of special flood hazard area than anywhere in Dare County. And some of the options that they asked us to look at that we're going to take back to our big group and I'll report back to you, I'll just give you a quick synopsis, is to possibly send an informal letter with the data that we have regarding areas that we know are flood prone that are being moved out of the special flood hazard area. Not the formal appeal process, but more of an informal. We've recognized that there are some issues with the existing or the preliminary maps and, you know, we hope that you'll look into that. And then it doesn't go through the major appeals process, but it may allow us to start a dialogue with those groups to possibly work on some of the issues that we've identified. And we're going to take that back to our big group and see if all the municipalities and the counties also want to do this and then we'll try to do it collectively at the same time so that it is a united voice from the Dare County municipalities and the county itself. So I'll be back with you guys probably in the next four to six weeks with more information on that. But at this point, I would like to see if the board is, there's some consensus not, at this point, not to try to enter into a formal appeal process, but to continue to work and create this dialogue between the state and the other municipalities to, for a higher regulatory standard and possibly the informal letter letting them know our concerns about the map. And I'll answer any questions you have. I'm not sure if, but that's the update. That's where we are. And we don't know when the appeal process is supposed to start. It was supposed to start several months ago, at least four months ago, so.
What sort of local things can we do if it's adopted as shown, as presented? We can do other stuff.
We would look at our flood damage prevention ordinance and what they're, they call it a higher regulatory standard, but basically require elevations throughout town that are consistent with what we know is the flood level.
Even if that's, even if that's higher than what they say?
Yes, sir. And another thing, if you do, if you do take that approach, you get a tremendous amount of community rating system credits so that those people that we're promoting to hold on to their flood insurance are going to get deeper and deeper discounts if we develop higher regulatory standards. If you also apply higher regulatory standards outside the special flood hazard area, you get to count that area in your open space calculations and things like that that we haven't been able to do in the past. So ultimately, it could help our citizens that do require flood insurance and those that we want to maintain it have better flood insurance rates by developing these higher regulatory standards. So it's protecting property and infrastructure for the town and it also would provide lower insurance rates ultimately. And the homeowner, if they go higher than they're required to go and they keep insurance, their insurance drops dramatically per foot over the elevation required. So all in all, it could, they say that if you do one foot of free board, it costs about 25 extra dollars a month on your mortgage and saves you $1,200 a year on insurance. So the cost benefit ratio of a higher regulatory standard really does show up for the property owners, but what those regulations are have definitely not fully been developed yet. And we're trying to work with the other municipalities so that possibly most of us will be on the same page and no one will be going out there alone. We'll be working together to try to protect all of Dare County and not just one spot.
Yeah, I personally agree with what you said about not making any formal protests or anything. Just doing it the way you just said.
And to make a formal protest, you have to scientifically prove that their methodology was wrong, which is very, very expensive. Requires lots of hydrologists and lots of engineers to come in on behalf of the town. But an informal letter explaining that we've identified issues and the data of flood, our past floods, may be helpful for them to examine someone their own. Maybe.
Any comments, thoughts? Should I see nods of consensus?
I think there's unanimous consensus. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Meredith.
Okay. Commissioners, agenda.
Well, I've heard a lot about the land use plan that we currently have at the last planning board meeting and I think it might be time to look at updating it. So I was trying to see how you guys would feel about looking into that.
I think there's several of us that are on the same page. I've actually had an opportunity to speak a couple of times to Meredith, to Mary, to Debbie. And actually, they will be prepared at our next meeting on May 8th to come forward with a timeline proposal, possibly the cost estimate then, so we can formally evaluate it and determine our next steps. So if everybody's on board with that, then that would be May 8th.
That would include a new survey, public citizen survey.
New survey? So great.
That's all.
Perfect, thank you.
I will just say that Sheila and I just came from the Outer Banks Hospital and they were just designated a dementia friendly hospital. And I believe it's one of the first in North Carolina, so absolutely the first, so.
The first dementia friendly hospital.
And it consists of a lot of different things, including all of the staff being trained to be able to understand what is entailed with somebody having dementia and also training volunteers to maybe come in and help someone who has dementia if they're there without someone or to give someone respite if they're there with a loved one that has dementia. So there's a lot of different things involved with that. But there's a dementia task force through Healthy Carolinians that meets monthly and there's lots of good things going on there, so that was, that was great.
Yeah, I have two things. One of them was my, our mailman stopped and talked to us today and he asked us, "Steve, I wanted to talk to you about this before, but I didn't get a chance. If next time we do that, well, pickup, in our literature we send out, ask people to keep their stuff at least 10 feet from mailboxes." He's had two flat tires trying to get, you know, trying to get in and it sounds like a good idea to me. I don't think that's a problem.
Educational material.
Yeah, I was like, why didn't we think of that? Why didn't I think of that? The other thing, real quickly, is I just read yesterday that Jay Hatteras National Seashore is going to be named by the International Dark Sky Association. It's going to be a dark sky area. There's only like, I think 60 of them in the world that qualify based on their criteria and that's, it is good for us, you know? And my wife and I were in Sedona last year and they were, they were the seventh one to get on the list. And that place is amazing. Even downtown, when there's business, you can still look up and see Milky Way. It's great. But anyway, that's really, you get down there and it's a lot different when you're looking up here.
Great, thank you. Under Mayor's Agenda, one I'm just to share with you and literally just discussed this with Mary and Debbie earlier today. You know, we have on a number of occasions been in a position to need to recruit for new committees that we have. And we discussed today with, we have the segments that run on the GovEd channel and typically reproduce one once a month and one was sharing or showing just before this meeting. But thought about possibly one of our next segments being an introduction to all of our different boards and committees and basically the role of that board or committee, what the makeup is, what their main functions and responsibilities. So I think that's something that we may do twofold. One, it just educates folks if they're heading to one of those committees what they could expect. But two, it may help us attract folks that find that to be of interest and then put in an application to possibly serve on one of those committees. Hopefully we'll see that in the not so far future. And then the only other thing was, I know we had possibly discussed maybe needing to make, was it a November meeting change?
Yes.
Okay, do you know yet if that needs to be changed?
I do know.
Okay. Maybe we could be prepared to look at, I don't know if you'll know, in May, we could look at that and try to make a change. Perfect, okay. All right. Debbie, anything for the Town Managers Agenda?
No ma'am, thank you.
Okay. So, we don't have a consent agenda tonight either. So basically what we do at this point, this is not our typical meeting. This is, we do this twice a year. We have a public forum, which is the bulk of our agenda, which almost means there's really no agenda. And what we do is take the opportunity in a more less informal environment, or excuse me, a less formal environment, to try to have some dialogue and discussion with our citizens or visitors on any issue that they find of relevance or pertinence to them. To try to make it a little less formal, we go and sit in the seats in front of us. If that really helps or not, but we're going to do that. So we're going to pause, get up and just relocate and then we'll pick it up from there with the forum. Is this still more casual? That's right. Anyway, so one of the big ways that this is different than say, one of our regular meetings is we don't do any time limits. So I mean, not that, obviously you don't want to speak for hours on end. We want to make sure there's enough opportunity for anyone who wants to address the board, but you're not on a three minute time limit like we do during public comment. So we don't have a structure to this. If you want to speak, just raise your hand, we'll call on you. We do ask, if you don't mind, just to identify yourself by name and address just so if we need to have any follow-up, it is being recorded and that way we can kind of reach back out and get in touch with you. That being said, who would like to go first? Somebody has to break the ice. Okay.
Come on, Skip.
I was just going to say, kind of follow up with Meredith was talking about. We had a little task force meeting this morning. It's home builders and surveyors and engineers and I think it started with the county because Jay Overton was tied into them and we're trying to come up with ideas. But it's pretty much like Meredith said, trying to come up with somewhat of a measuring point for the county basically, so that everything would be pretty consistent throughout the county. And, you know, we just started today, but it's kind of along the same line. We're defined, correct me if I'm wrong, Meredith, but once you're, you can only go three foot above, you only get credit for three foot above the, how, come on, say that. You get extra credit with flood insurance. There is a limit, like it's three foot additional, something like that.
It's changing a little bit. They just redid the regulations to address some of the, some of the stuff going on. And I'm not sure if that three foot is still in there, I'd have to check.
Okay. Kind of basically what we're coming up with is a point to measure and we love the new maps as far as insurance goes. But from a construction standpoint, we understand that, we feel like it's pretty ridiculous. But we want everybody to be on the same playing field for construction or whatever. But, you know, just say we pick a seven footer, eight footer, whatever happens to be and where you measure that from, whether it's the bottom of the gird or the top of the gird wherever, we want to be safe, but potentially that's looking like it would be three, about three foot above where the maps are going right now. It kind of looked along the same lines as where the maps were, which has seemed to have worked out pretty well. We don't know of any real instances where it went much above that, you know, where the base flood lines were. I know my garage is, it was probably eight inches below the base flood when it flooded two feet. With the new maps, I could literally build living space a foot lower than that garage level. So we love, we love a new rate potential, but other than that, we're trying to work out something with the towns and the counties so that everybody's on the same page and it would make it things so much simpler for everyone involved.
The task force you mentioned that you guys met this morning, are there planning representatives from the municipalities and the county or is this more home builders, realtors or home builders?
I'm not sure how it evolved, but I believe it was with Jay, meeting with the county, with Donna Creef and all of them, because we got information from all that as well. I think that's how it evolved and we're open to work with probably the towns and the counties and the realtors as well, well, they weren't there today, but she would have been part of it. You know, a few builders, Jay Overton and Ray, what's his last name? Another engineer that deals with surveyors type thing all the time. So hopefully it'll be of help in some form.
I know when the maps first, these preliminary maps first came out, many of us looked at it and then just kind of shook our head in disbelief because knowing very well that it floods where they're saying it's not going to flood or that it wouldn't be impacted. And I think that with the right focus and engagement early on, just like what Meredith's looking at and the group that she's meeting with, what you all are looking at, we can make the most of this without going through that appeal process. One, it's costly, two, it's timely, three, it's probably very unlikely it would get changed. But by not appealing and having the maps the way they are, we may be able to capitalize on some great advantages for when it comes to people retaining insurance that they don't have to. The big, I think, push for us is going to be really getting people to keep that insurance even if it's not required. Because, you know, if they don't and when we have an event, because I think it would be when, not if, there could be huge issues for all of us impacted by that, by folks letting their insurance go. They can't get any help to rebuild or to renovate or take care of mitigating any damages. How that spirals would be awful for our community.
Another likely scenario that we're concerned about is if in two years or five years or 10 years, they go, "Uh-oh, we screwed up." Now all of a sudden, you're going to have, you could possibly have a lot of houses that are, they're not.
Unsurable, probably.
You probably can't get insurance at that point. Or you get the houses that get flooded, don't have flood insurance and the people can't afford to put them back. So you end up with all these forms that are condemned basically because they can't afford them.
And I think you get it as a builder. I think folks that are engaged in coming to meetings and hearing these discussions will get it. I think the big challenge for us and with your assistance and the Realtor's assistance is getting the message out and packaging, packaging it in a way that folks that, you know, that they're going to absorb that and realize that it's worth holding on to because of these risks. It'll be nice that we can all work together and there's a lot of great discussions and dialogues that are happening on that front.
It's a good opportunity to get some consistency as well.
Sheila, one thing to add and I forgot to say it and Brian actually reminded me. Our PPI committee, which is part of our CRS program, met, Skip sits on that committee, Brandy sits on that committee, but it also includes mortgage brokers, insurance agents, realtors, citizens and engineer, surveyor. And had this very open discussion about the new maps and the agreement that they're great for insurance purposes, but not reality. Another thing that's happened is the county in their effort to try to get public awareness out there and to try to pitch different ideas, also had a enormous meeting with surveyors and engineers. I don't think, you might not have been there. Brian went to it. They invited surveyors and engineers, people that are going to have to deal with a standardized type of elevation. If that's the direction we go, how would you do it? Do you agree with it? Is it going to be easier, harder? What can we do to make it work? So that we're trying to get the public input and the professional input so that if we take a direction, the people that have to deal with it the most are on board with it and understand it before it's not just going to be dropped and no one knows what it is or how it works. So there is a public outreach that's also part of this group that we're working with that seems to be trying to do a pretty good job. And I think as things develop further, these outreach efforts will become much, much bigger.
There was actually some discussion about that today. From the surveyors and engineers standpoint, there might have to be another form.
Right.
Some simple form so that you can prove down the road that you were compliant when the house was built. And it'll also give you, you know, show you where, how far above you are as far as the residential requirements go that allow you to get that insurance. You know, if you're in an accident and you can still get insurance, but at a greatly reduced rate and then you'll be able to maintain it if things do change. That's the theory because I feel like it's probably going to change at some point.
Questions? Once the task force comes up with a recommendation, say it's the three feet, does that then come to the towns and we try to make that part of our building requirements? Or what would happen after a recommendation comes out?
Trying to come up with something consistent that the towns and the county would all.
We'd all adopt it.
Except, and it's not just us. I mean, every mayor, they're talking, the county's talking about it. But we want to come up with something that is consistent and everybody can agree on that that's where we're going to build from. You know, we're not going to build from that, what we feel is a faulty flood, base flood level.
And I think all the towns are looking at a general way to do this, but I think that also we're going to be doing analysis as to what our elevation needs to be. I don't think that the county and the towns are all going to pick the same elevation. I don't think that they can. I think that everybody's got their own flood issues that they're going to have to address. Hatters and Kittle Hill aren't the same. They're just not. And Collington's not the same as even Kittle Hill. And Kitty Hawk's got its own set of issues. So I think each town wants to try to standardize the approach, but the actual number would be based on analysis that we would do in-house to figure out what that number would be. I think that a lot of us are in agreement that we're going to be around the same number, but, you know, that, that work hasn't been done yet. We're just trying to get kind of a grasp of what our higher regulatory standard might be at this point and not what that number will be.
This task force, nothing going on with this task force. We had all the enlarged maps. Everybody took some and everybody, you know, maybe Jay's doing Hatters and going down to speak to builders and people in Hatters. And I obviously took the Kittle Hill because I'm familiar with that. But everybody looking at the before and after, the maps from 2000, you know, the ones we were using compared to ones we are now and trying to come up with something that's reasonable and safe, I would say. I think it's a good, hopefully it'll be of help in some way.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Mike, you ready to go second?
Oh, sure. I just got a couple of things and I'll keep them quick. One of them actually ties into this conversation that Meredith started with and we're not talking about now. I am a big fan of the free board. I would like to see that come into some sort of consideration to make that a new building requirement on any new property built within the county or town. And you can adjust a free board depending on the base elevation above sea level. It would really go a long way to curing a lot of these problems. And I also believe that it would be a standard that would be easily accessible and uniform. Just food for thought.
Can I respond to that? It's possible that if we're three foot above where the foot maps are, not even near a free board, it's already being incorporated. Possible.
Yeah, but we all know that even on that with this last rain event, everybody took water.
It still didn't go above the existing flood, base flood levels that I know of.
I mean, we were just talking about experiences from places that we know are prone to flood that now do. So I just would, you know, I'm trying to be a forward thinker, trying to think about it because I had a client of mine buy a house right off Third Street in an ex-flood zone, never had flooded. I begged him to buy flood insurance, he didn't. Two days after closing, he's got a foot of water in his house and he blames me.
Well, you know, with Matthew, I mean, this was unprecedented flooding throughout the town. There's places that have never flooded, ever, 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 that flooded in Matthew. So I think it, and it's hard to, some of the, I mean, I forgot when we did, we talked about it shortly after Matthew and we ran some numbers and we need, you know, often we look at things based on, is it, you know, the 100-year storm. This was what, the 1500 or 2000 year storm, so, yeah.
Town engineer said it was 500 to 2000 years. Or the Kittle Hills.
Right, Pete, Pete had done some calculations based on that.
It's been 1500 years since this storm. We could have another one next year and that would be 1500. and that would be fifteen hundred. Does that make sense?
Well, absolutely. I know.
You never know. The odds is, it's just spinning the wheel.
And I think.
That was just a suggestion, you know, something for consideration, especially with the new land use plan. Uh, the second thing I'd like to say is hotels. Don't change the height. Don't change a thing. If anything, get more restrictive on them. I don't think any hotel should be built on the ground. Just my personal opinion, especially on the oceanfront. And then the last thing I had was about this little Facebook stuff going on about the 24-bedroom house. You know, social media these days, people with misinformation, they say it enough, the non-truth becomes the truth. So I think it would be wise for the town to reach out to that person who started the thread, maybe private message them, whatever. Encourage them to come to a meeting like this and talk where it's actually gonna do some good. Like I said, just another nickel's one for your purse.
Now we get to the really informal part.
No, you didn't. You didn't.
I was trying to be helpful.
I know you said they should come out. Here she is. So it's a good thing.
Well, it's the first one ever.
Welcome.
That's all.
Well, and you guys were on the same page in thinking. So that's, that's great. And Colleen, thank you for making the introduction. See, we are getting really informal. I love it. And that's great. And, and you're right. I will tell you that the, the town, and I know, I can tell you first personally, I, I don't get into when anything's on Facebook in a public forum going back and forth. If it's a debate, you never win a debate through that social media forum. That being said, I did reach out personally through a private message and then we facilitated a, we arranged to have a discussion. And so I think from the town's perspective, as far as what we share on our Facebook page, we kinda take that same mindset. Now, that being said, we can post our own post about putting out information that's factual and, and accurate, but you, you probably won't see in the future us getting in any type of, of debate because, well, you know, all the reasons we wouldn't.
Post. I was saying, reach out.
Yeah, right.
Off of the social media.
Which is perfect because that's exactly, yeah.
And that starts the dialogue. It, it, it helps everybody achieve the, the goal, which is information and.
And oftentimes people use, and, and not to put any words in Sharon's mouth, but sometimes people use Facebook as a way to start that initial reach out who may, they may not know who to go to in, in the town, or they may not even understand the way Deer County's structured, that you've got Deer County decision makers, you've got municipality decision makers. So.
Exactly.
It's a forum to then make those introductions. So, yeah, we're on the same page.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
I just need to follow up on that. So I've been, the accusation is there's some inaccuracies. So let's be specific about what's inaccurate. And I will correct anything that's not.
The parking situation. You said that there was 50 required parking spaces.
When I first, you're right. You're right.
That's just the first thing I saw.
That's the only one, though. And that was before I realized, I saw the plans and saw that it was only 24. But there are no, and that I'm aware of since then, no other inaccuracies on that post.
But would you agree or disagree that starting off with false information tends to inflame the situation?
Well, I think that, you know, I think the, the number of parking spaces in the, in the big picture, it does not change the, the, the discussion that, that ensued from that post.
Fair enough.
Great. Thank you all. Who would like to go next? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Patty Ivan Good, and I have emailed you all, and I've received responses. I appreciate them. And I'm here to reinforce my request for a signal light at Avalon Drive. There are approximately a thousand homes in the subdivision with no means of egress from that subdivision, both east side and west side. I'm on the west side, but. And I did receive an email from Mary Quiddly on your behalf, saying that you would be addressing this on the Monday, May 8th issue. I have contacted DOT and they said that Town Hall had to be involved. I, I assume that issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Have not addressed the planning board because I didn't know what the proper format would be for that. But I appreciate anything you can do to help us.
Great. And just, just to close the gap on any committed communications as far as the process, so you are aware, we will address this and discuss it at the May 8th meeting if the board decides to request DOT since it's, ultimately, it's DOT's decision. But the reason DOT responded as they did to you is they aren't going to come in and do anything unless they hear from the town that we want it to be done.
Exactly. They, they told me that.
Good. Okay. So we will then discuss it and, and see if that's the direction of the board. And then if so, reach out to, to NC DOT.
And I realize I'm probably, my community is probably not the only one that needs a stoplight. But there are so many of us in that subdivision that it's just, it's, well, you can't make a left turn, period. Not even this time of year.
We don't know. We, we don't know if you don't tell us. And that's why, that's why, then that's why we told you to come.
And I really, I really appreciate your help. And I really appreciate your responses to my email, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I think a couple of examples. We, state works with us very well. A few examples of, not that many years ago, we asked about lowering the speed limit and they did. Not maybe to my personal satisfaction, but, but they did, you know. I think it's still, it would've been 45 up past K mark, but they didn't do that. The other thing is, we just found out this week that they're gonna put up one of the push-button things with the little rocky people at the.
Pedestrian signal?
Yeah.
Other, otherwise no one asked.
Mike's interpreter helping us out there.
At the northwest corner of the intersection at Ocean Bay and the Beach Road. And the reason being, we have our public parking lot right there for the beach. And when you get to that corner, after you get out of your car and walk there, you either have to go across Ocean Bay or across NC 12 without a signal that you can ask for. So they're gonna put one directly across from the parking lot. So you don't have to go cross this way and then cross at the, at the signal in front of Stop and Shop. So that's, and they're gonna do that pretty quickly, so.
They were very, I started the Adopt a Highway program in North Carolina back in the eighties, and DOT was very cooperative in getting that program established. So. But my people aren't there anymore. You tend to retire after thirty-two years.
That's great. Okay. Who would like to go next?
Well, I wasn't gonna talk about it tonight, but as long as the issue came up anyway, can we just, as a whole group here, talk about the problems with these event homes that are coming, propping up like toadstools all over the oceanfront, Killable Hills? And what can be done about it? And how we can regulate it? And, you know, I've got a 24 parking lot, 24-bedroom, 12,000-foot, single-family home going up next door to me on a very limited lot on the oceanfront, 75-foot width lot. The density of, of the number of people that are gonna be there is gonna be unreal and it's gonna have a huge impact on our little immediate area. So can we, can we just briefly kind of talk about the problem inherent in the lack of zoning that is currently on the books to take care of these, these types of structures?
Well, I, um, can, in full disclosure, Sharon, I had a, a conversation earlier today. And I know you've had the opportunity to have conversations with some of our planning staff and town manager. And so this situation that she personally finds herself in, well, let me step back. The current ordinances that we have in place, which is, all we can do is operate by what our ordinances are that are on the book, that legally is what guides us and how any construction can be done. Those can be changed. I mean, your ordinance is your living, breathing document. They're changed most often by an individual, entity, making a ordinance request, a change to, to that ordinance, which is something we discussed is, is an option here. Now, if you, once someone has pulled a permit, that we could still change the ordinance, but that permit is based on what ordinance was in place at the time they pulled the permit. So this specific situation, I'm not sure. Not sure what the, the builders' timeline or plans are. We discussed if this is something that is desirable to do. Obviously, you want, you know, you have a personal situation, but townwide, then that's the, the direction to go and make it done in time before anyone puts any more requests. If this board made a decision to want to make, make a change on looking at the size of homes. But I, I don't know. We didn't, you know, certainly didn't wanna to give the perspective that it could, it's, it's, could be done in that timely of a fashion. But maybe. Also, until the board has a specific ordinance with specific figures to look at and, and the processes, it goes, an application's submitted, it goes to the planning board, the planning board reviews it, and it's scheduled for a Board of Commissioners meeting. It's kind of the flow of things. That being said, just for some historical perspective, certainly you all recall, it may be eighteen months ago now, we had a series of, of meetings. We had the, the, a public forum like this where we specifically advertised, come talk to us about large development. And then we had some follow-up meetings and we kind of, we, we never got to a new recommendation for changing the ordinance. And I believe specifically the way it's probably quoted in the minutes is we left it, that we would take it up when an ordinance request, an ordinance change request is presented, which may be where we find ourselves soon. So I think, and I share with you my position, is in, in very rare cases, when I, I, I will vote based on what I hear is the public's desire and will and what's best for our community. In very rare cases, those things don't align. I would say 95% of the time, those things align really well. Sometimes you, you may be forced to make a really tough decision that you know still is gonna upset a, a small group because you see the greater, the greater good of that. So we, we have reference that we are looking to update the land use plan. Right now, the, the most recent thing we have to go by is a community survey from 2007 that, that basically strongly, if you extrapolate comments and, or not comments, but feedback from that, is that folks are not in favor of increased density, certainly not in favor of, of increasing height. There was a specific committee that met to look at that and that came out of that. So it's kind of just my summary intake, but Sharon's heard from me. She probably didn't necessarily need to hear from me again. But I figured I just opened the, you know, the, start with that. And then if you guys wanna chime in.
Am I correct, Meredith, that limiting the number of bedrooms is not permitted?
The general statute changes. Yeah, we can.
That's correct.
So, yeah. So we can't regulate it by saying how many bedrooms you can have. There's other ways to regulate it.
Yeah, you can't do it by layout, number of rooms, types of rooms. You can't control the architecture. You can't control placement of any type of decorative features.
Can't make them put fire sprinklers in.
Well, that's the building code. That's different than this, that's different than the, this, the, what Mike's talking about is the general statute that limits our ability to regulate single-family dwellings. The North Carolina Building Code recognizes not by the size or number of bedrooms, but recognizes the construction type of single-family dwelling.
Correct.
Therefore, it does not require sprinklers by North Carolina Building Code. They can put in sprinklers, but it's not required by the code.
And we can't require that because we can't require something.
There's another piece of legislation in the general statute that doesn't allow us to supersede or be more restrictive than the North Carolina Building Code.
Correct. Because we talked about all that in the last.
Yeah, one comment and then we'll get to the next comment.
Yeah. I just wanted to say that both Southern Shores and Naxhead have found their way of limiting these structures by limiting the square footage, how the max, given that the maximum square footage for a single-family home. And I think even if you put, you know, 6,000 on that max, on that's still a pretty big house that will give an investor a pretty good return and would have some good accomplishments as far as keeping the aesthetics and the density down where it should be, where it's safe. Keeping the nuisance away and the traffic problems and everything else that kept us inherent with these big buildings.
Just a question on part of that, the changes that the state made. Is the limiting it by square footage even allowed? Or do we have to play with the, the FAR or the overall coverage instead?
You can, you can deal with bulk. It allows you to, to deal in bulk.
Yes, can we?
Either. I'll, I'll tell you that some of the conversation that Sheila mentioned earlier, that we've had pre, in previous meetings, eighteen or so months ago, and then going forward. I'm a big person, big proponent. Proponent of limiting the sizes of these things. Sorry, having the mics in room.
The mics in room?
So you named something after you.
And so we, we had a lot of discussion in various meetings on what can we do while still allowing property owners, certain property rights? What can you do? And we've looked at how to arrange parking to make sure that it's not stacked and make sure that there's actually an actual fire lane going into the homes. We, we got, we got a lot of education during all of that. Primarily, the biggest thing for us was that we couldn't supersede North Carolina Building Code. So we couldn't require some of the things that commercial buildings require, which is illuminated exits and sprinkler systems. And of course, then we heard from other folks that say that sometimes sprinkler systems do more damage than sometimes the actual incident itself. But our biggest fear, to be honest with you, is a disaster. Because right now, North Carolina views that as a single-family home. We know it's not. We know that that's, as you put it, an event home. It's a destination for multiple families. The, it, it's not, it's not dead in my mind. We've had a lot of things come up that kind of, kind of moved it around on our priority list, but it's not done. And the issues that you're bringing up, I mean, we're, I think we're all in agreement that if we can figure out a way to, to do this, what we don't want is for the conversation next year to be, why are we spending so much money defending our position in court? And that's some of the things that I think, Kurt, that the county is finding out right now. And part of that is just how they handled things after permits were done and stopping construction and, and doing some things. And so that's where Sheila was talking about. We have to have this done prior to a permit being pulled. I mean, I, it's, I think it's possible that we'd still have potential litigation brought against us if we limited and someone has a lot that can support a bigger house. The biggest difference, I think, that I found out between Naxhead and the Killable Hills oceanfront lots is ours are significantly larger. So the 5,000 square foot makes sense. On a personal note, my father lived in Naxhead. It's a ten-and-a-half mile post. And some beautiful old cottages got torn down. And they built cookie cutter, 4,999 square foot houses. They're all the same except for a couple of color differences. The setbacks, you can kind of peek through there and, and see the water now. It's, it's horrendous, to be honest with you. I don't like it, but they, they fit in the guidelines that Naxhead handed them. I would much prefer to see the old shakedown cottages that were built in the 40s or so.
Are the Southern Shore's lots bigger or smaller?
I think they're bigger. I think they're bigger, yeah. They might even be bigger than ours, some of them.
And they limit theirs, I think, to five. It's a five or six thousand square feet for a single family.
And so, and that's, that's, that's probably a direction. I mean, we, we, once the ordinance, not ordinance, but once the legislative, or legislature was introduced to the state, that really kind of put a, a hold on where we thought we were gonna go. Because if we made a change to an ordinance, we didn't want that to then be going against state guidelines and then we'd have to redo the whole thing all over again. Now that that, I think, is probably settling down a little bit, then maybe that gives us an opportunity to, to come after that. So I'm certainly for it, coming back into our meetings and, and having some discussions. I don't think, I don't think you're gonna find too much disagreement within the town or anyone else. I think there might be a couple builders that'll be annoyed with me, but that's about it. it. One of the things that we had talked about is also that potentially that the economy would kind of self-regulate whether these homes are even viable long-term and to keep building them. And then, of course, the downside is what happens to them when the economy is no longer viable and now we have these monstrosities sitting on the beach that are not being maintained and not being utilized. So there's a lot of variables there and so, but I think I'm set up. But anyway, thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
We really do appreciate it.
Did you have some comments?
I got a little history lesson on earlier today about the big homes. It's been a big concern of mine as well and the direction we're going with them. And I was told that Killable Hills originally was open to the big homes because of the tax base it brought, because our town had generally, average home was not that big and the tax, getting from wouldn't that, we kind of needed that because we already had, our taxes were as high or higher than most communities around here. Y'all can probably tell me if I'm wrong, but this, that was the information I was getting. And they were looking for the tax base to keep our taxes down. Other than that, I think, you know, I think something needs to be done as well. And said it before, and you know, I've been talking about this for several years now, but, and there is a chance statewide that it may go into a third designation from what I'm being told. Because it's not residential, it's not really commercial. The problem is if you make that home commercial, then it has to, first of all, you can't afford, nobody can afford insurance. Second of all, it would have to be ADA compliant, you know, be ramps and...
Calamity.
Sprinkler systems, which I'm not opposed to sprinkler systems, but there's a lot more involved in just saying this is a commercial residence. So I, you know, but I think it does merit a lot of discussion. I've said it in the past.
I think maybe one of the reasons that they started developing the way they have been is because of, nobody's wanting to build a hotel.
Well, it's also the wedding things just taken off in this area. That's what's pushing it, I think. I think, I thought by now, they would have to slow down construction because there wouldn't be that, that demand for so many of them. But I think it's the wedding industry in our area that's just inflamed it, really.
It's been, I can't remember when the last one was built. Used to be the Comfort Inn over there.
The Vertellian?
Yeah. What was the date? I don't remember. Anyway. We're getting, we're getting a new one now. Not on the beach.
The one thing I caution about all this, though, in talking about changing things is that if, and again, I'm kind of with the rest of, I think we're all in agreement on a lot of this, is I, I do oppose changing the designation from residential to commercial because you change so much when you do that. That's, I know that that's, that's one way to fix a lot of things in people's minds, but I, I think the ramifications for that are detrimental in more ways than one. And if you look down the list of all the things that could happen later, i-if that is no longer an event house, it's, what we're doing with our oceanfront is very, very important and we need to, we just need to remember that. So I just, I think we need to keep that back in our minds.
Good discussion. Ready for next question?
Sure.
Okay. Who would like to go next?
Phil, you got anything? Nothing? Colleen?
Nothing. Y'all know what I do.
I like your...
Yes.
I do.
We, James Almody, I was going to say 113 Portal, not under my... We've, we've had a couple of discussions, act, with the Community Appearance Group. And it, it's a kind of a pet peeve of mine regarding houses that have had catastrophic incidents, which, whether it be fires or whatever, specifically fires, that a house that, you know, has had partial damage and the people's things are still nice, they make sure that that house is taken care of, you know, that nobody can get in. Well, we have a house that's completely burned out and there's no doors, no windows, no whatever. And there's a house specifically that I have in mind that's now been torn down, that sat empty for about two years and it probably took, I don't know, six months or so till that was boarded up. And it happened to be in the line where kids walk to school. And I think that there should be something, there's, there is some, some verbiage in our ordinances that kind of address this, where these things are made sure to be secured, you know, in a safe manner. And it's hard for me to understand that, I do understand that we're, you know, that we're not allowed to be on people's property. But when there, it's a safety issue, especially like this, that, you know, people could go in and, you know, it becomes very attractive to kids that, you know, suddenly, you know, animals, we do have some homeless population here, that we can't do something where, when it's, when it's an extreme situation like that, that we can't step up and maybe secure that building and send the people the bill, you know, and let them take care of it. Because that's done in other jurisdictions where they're allowed to do that. And, you know, the process that we have in place now, whether we have to streamline it, because there is a process. And we talked about in the Community Appearance meeting, that the time spent chasing these people down, you know, and finding them and all the man-hours that go into that, it would take less time and less money to have this house secured than it does to go through that process that you have to start finding them and, and everything else that goes into that. So I wish, wish there was some way that we could maybe address that in a, in a fashion that either streamlines the process that we already have, or that we afford ourselves the opportunity that we take care of that and then, you know, forward the bill on to the people and their insurance company. Because most people, you know, they're happy that, you know, they don't have to worry about that. You know, now they're, you know, they're not worried about somebody getting hurt on this piece of property or whatever. Just wish there was something we could do.
Or even finding somebody to address it for them if they don't live here. I mean, most of these are absentee owners. You know, how do you know who to call to have somebody go over to board up your house?
I think I might know which house you're talking about.
It's been torn down now, so.
Well, the problem is, is that there's debris, there's like a blown up hot water heater in the front yard.
That's all been picked up today. So, yeah, it's all different. But I'm not talking about making the house beautiful. You know, I'm not talking about, you know, people's property rights where everything has to be nice, whether they have, you know, 17 bicycles laying in the yard. I'm not talking about that aspect. I'm talking about making sure that this building doesn't fall on somebody or that some kid doesn't go in playing and end up getting hurt.
I think I would like to probably suggest we ask our attorney to look into...
He is.
Good. He's looking at that?
Yes.
Because it's a matter of, you know, figuring out what's our legal boundary, but trying to make, if we need to make, whether it's a procedural change or an ordinance change or whatever, to allow this to be a more efficient process, maybe in times of extreme whatever, you know, some type of catastrophe, of course, that would need to be defined. Because the other thing we don't want is to put in, you know, to make a change in place that, yes, gets to what you're talking about, but then makes it really easy for someone to say, oh, the town's just going to take care of that for me because I have this. So it's filing that balance, but I appreciate you bringing it back up. I'm glad to know he's already looking at that and hopefully we can get some type of better, more efficient process for those, you know, not, you know, few and far between, but when they happen, it's an issue. So, thanks for bringing that. Who's next? Don't want to put anyone on the spot, but we want to make sure that you have an opportunity if you would like to. Because when you're done, we're done. So. Does anyone have anything else they want to talk about tonight?
Something good, maybe.
No? No, it's okay.
Nothing on the...
Well, I will say, I appreciate there's a few, at least maybe not new to you, but some new faces in the room to me, and I appreciate you guys coming out and joining us this evening. Hopefully you can feel that it's really, you know, even though at a, so at a regular meeting, the only difference is you would go to the podium to speak, you would be limited to three minutes, but we don't treat you any differently and we don't want it to be any more awkward or uncomfortable. So this is how we like our meetings to operate. And so hopefully if this wasn't a scary experience, you'll come back to another meeting and join us. Anything else that you will have?
No. We're not going to serve pizzas to get people here.
Hey, we have, I mean, I know, I know a few of you have brought you out, but we have some other faces and I don't think they came thinking we were going to feed them.
Well, I'm just meeting adjournments. I'm going to go read my dictionary.
Thesaurus. I think you need a thesaurus. Anyway. All right. So with no other comments or business?
I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
Any other discussion? Uh, those in favor, please sign my signature.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.